Yeah, I'll call Lewiston City Council to order for the June 9, 2025, meeting at the time and place as advertised. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting the pledge.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, every and justice from.
Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on agenda items or other items. They wish to bring the council's attention excluding those scheduled for public carrying, as there may not be another opportunity to comment. Once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Commentary is limited to three minutes. And it does look like we have citizen comments tonight, so I'm going to move right to presentations. Item A, Sunshine Disposal and Recycling Proclamation, proclaiming June 9 as Sunshine Disposal and Recycling Day in the city of Lewiston. I am going to be joined by Mark Toy up front here, and I'm going to read the proclamation. And then after that, Mark is going to go back to the microphone, and he's going to introduce others with him, and then maybe share a little bit of the history of Sunshine with us. So, Mark, if you want to join me up here?
Okay. Proclamation, city of Lewiston, Idaho. Whereas in 1974, Sunshine Disposal and Recycling began operations in Lewiston, Idaho, working out of a small retail mall space before expanding to a full shop with a mechanic bay and storage yard. And whereas Sunshine Disposal and Recycling started with just four employees, and as a fourth-generation family-owned business, has grown alongside the city of Lewiston to more than quadruple its workforce. And whereas the company is proud to have three employees who have serviced city of Lewiston routes for more than 30 years, and a fourth employee who has done so for over 20 years. And whereas the equipment and services provided by Sunshine have evolved significantly over the past five decades, from manually emptying customer-reviewed cans and bags into rear-loading trucks by two-person crews, to today's automated collection of separate carts for garbage, recycling, and yard waste at the curb using trucks equipped with mechanical arms. Now, therefore, I, Dan Johnson, Mayor of the city of Lewiston, proclaim June 9, 2025, as Sunshine Disposal and Recycling Day in the city of Lewiston, Idaho, and recognize Sunshine Disposal and Recycling as a valued, longstanding, excuse me, family-owned business, community partner, well, and trusted service provider. In celebration of its 50 years of exceptional service and commitment to the Lewiston community, Sunshine Disposal and Recycling is honored with sincere gratitude and appreciation. In witness whereof, I appear on two, set my hand and seal of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, to be fixed here to this night, Dave, June 2025, Daniel D. Johnson, Mayor of Lewiston, Idaho. Mark, congratulations. Thank you.
Could I bring my team members up, and someone can snap a photo of them?
We are going to do that. Team members, you know who you are, come up here.
I'll introduce them when I get back.
I want you to introduce them, especially that troublemaker in the blue.
Yeah.
Do we have a volunteer that can take a snap of picture for us? Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council. We just circulated a photo that is the origination of our family business. As the mayor mentioned, I'm fourth generation. I've got some team members with me that I'll introduce as well. Our local district manager, Nate Echols. My sister, Adrian Torrey, who is also fourth generation, and our human resource director. And my oldest son, Michael, who is our fifth generation and is an operations specialist for the company. Thanks again. Appreciate your time very much and the proclamation. Adrian and I were reminiscing in anticipation of tonight about our annual summer vacation to Lewiston, Idaho, when we were kids. We stayed at the Tapadera many nights, and Dad worked and Mom took us to the pool and the river, and it was great. So, the good fond memories we both have. Thanks for the proclamation. As the mayor stated, we've had a partnership that has gone on for over 50 years. It's a very major milestone for us, and we're very proud of it. We appreciate that you trust us to service your community for your solid waste collection needs. It's a long time, and we're very appreciative. I would like to, I would like to also thank our employees. I think I stated to you guys last week, this is really about our frontline employees. They are our representatives. They represent us and you in the community. There are customer service agents, as well as the hard-working men and women that collect your garbage recycling and yard waste. As the mayor mentioned in the proclamation, we've got about 25% of our workforce that has worked for us for over 20 years. If you add in Adrian, myself, and my dad, you know, over 30% of us employees that work on behalf of your community have been working for the company for over 20 years. I also wanted to take a minute to thank your staff. Obviously, we work with Dustin and Rob at the transfer station. Mayor, we crossed paths originally 20 years ago when you were the solid waste director. I've appreciated our relationship in that time. I, we also do interact with some of your administrative staff and some others in Dustin's department. And again, we appreciate all those relationships. Be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't explain the picture to you. So, that picture, that picture is taken downtown Seattle, essentially, and it's horse and wagons. And in the center of the picture is Adrian and I's aunt and grandfather, the two children in the picture. We don't have a timestamp on it, unfortunately, but more than 100 years ago. If there are no questions, again, I want to thank you all for your time. Mayor, appreciate this very much. Members of the council, Dustin, your staff, really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Mark, thank you again. I think this is live. I don't know, maybe not. But thank you again for coming down today and bringing your team members with you. I will tell you, you know, going back 20 years or so, when I started at the city of Lewiston, and I had to work with Sunshine and the contracting for solid waste, I don't think I've changed a whole lot in 20 years, because I was kind of hard on you back then, too. And if the contract said you were supposed to do something, you weren't doing it, I called you up and said, hey, why aren't you doing it? And Sunshine, I think that's one thing that's made them a very strong company for our community, because they have always, and I can say this, have always been responsive to whenever I've called them and said, we've got something that needs fixing. And so, I really appreciate that about working with your company over the years. You've made it easy, you know, even when we had some difficult times. But I just appreciate the attention that you've paid to Lewiston and to our customers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And I told that story to my entire team over the course of the last week. You did a very nice job for the city as the solid waste director, and you did point things out that we needed to pay attention to. And I appreciate the fact that you recognize that we've done that and hopefully continue to do so. Again, Nate's our local manager, and he's the one that makes sure that those things are complied with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't want to keep you from other tasks that you may have tonight, but thank you for joining us tonight. We'll continue on with our meeting. Thank you. Okay, council, next we move to Roman numeral V, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless a counselor so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Schroder.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Council President Kleberg to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next up, council, we have Roman numeral six, active agenda, item eight, resolution 2025-17, considering accepting a public water utility and access easement from Sherateng, Sherry Ting, to the city of Lewiston. This is an action item. Councillors, if you have questions, our public works directors here. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Klein.
I just had one question. How much extra will it cost the city to locate the meter where the owner wants it?
Uh, in the long run, it's a savings, because the current water line that serves these, this property is not adequate. And so, I don't have the exact cost upfront to what they're doing, but I know in the long run, this is going to be a cost savings to both parties, which is how it was negotiated.
Okay.
Thank you, council. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve resolution 2025-17.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Council President Kleberg to approve resolution 2025-17. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, we have item B, resolution 2025-26, considering accepting and approving a right-of-way contract and claim for payment between William A. Scharnhorst and Dixiel Scharnhorst as grantors, and the city of Lewiston as grantee and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract and claim for payment. This is an action item. Council, if you have questions, Public Works Director Johnson is here tonight. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Spicklemeyer. Yeah, I had one question, Director. Looking through here in the cost, the overall cost of the project, the city's matches the $20,258. And then, to purchase the property, this, the city's portion is the $1,536? Is that correct?
Yep. It's coincidental that they're both $20,000 that the city paid to date, but the overall for this purchase is $20,000. But we're only paying, what is it, $1,700 for that?
I had to look at it a few times.
Yep, I did, too.
Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve resolution 2025-26.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve resolution 2025-26. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, we have item C, resolution 2025-24, considering approval of the local partnership memorandum of understanding for the North Idaho Special Assistant U.S. Attorney Initiative related to the federal prosecution of high-volume drug trafficking cases to the creation of a special assistant U.S. Attorney position for the northern Idaho region. This is an action item. Our city attorney is not here with us tonight, but council, if you have questions, I can try to answer it. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Council President Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, it's the Counselor Forsman. This goes back a long ways. I think it was mayor at the time, about 2015, when we started this discussion. So, when people talk about the wheels of government turn slow, here's a perfect example of it. I think it's a great idea to get a special attorney up here for northern Idaho, because it has become more or less a highway of trafficking, not only just east and west, but north and south. So, I support it.
Counselor Klein.
So, my only concern about it is that there's, there's 12 entities that are contributing. But it seems like we're kind of double-dipping, because we have Nez Perce County and the city of Lewiston, where a lot of these other cities and counties will, they'd be able to benefit from it, but they're not contributing to it.
So, Counselor, my understanding is that one of the goals to get this position established was to show very broad support for it. So, we have some other funding this year that's going to reduce the costs significantly. I don't think we'll pay more than $3,000, if even that, for the first year. But the focus is on drug trafficking, and fentanyl especially. And they're looking at communities that are up and down the 95 corridor, and then across northern Idaho on Interstate, there's that 94 up there. And so, if we were to get a high, what's the word I'm looking for, a high-profile case here in Lewiston, this is going to bring in the professional resources we knew to, we need to prosecute that case and probably save us money in the long run. But it brings in a person that has that, that training and can do the federal prosecution for us. So, in terms of trying to ask other folks to try to pick up more of the cost, I think it's fair to say that next year, we'll see what kind of support we get, you know, and every year thereafter. And, you know, maybe the numbers change. I don't know. But right now, it's a pretty small investment for us, I think, for the return that we're going to get on it. But, and I was in the Senate when this all started years ago, when we tried to get this going. So, it is good to see this finally get to this point. Counselor Spicklemeyer. Thank you, Mayor. And again, mine is, maybe it was in there and I didn't see it, but of these 12, is it all continued upon every one of them signing? That's a good question, and I don't know the answer, but I'm going to venture a guess and say that it does not. Again, I think the purpose is to show as much broad support as you can. So, if an agency decides that they don't want to participate, they're free to do that. But I, I don't think it's going to stop the position from moving forward. It would just cause the rate to go up? If it does, it'd be very small. I mean, like I said, I think we're into it for maybe $3,000, if even that. It's not a lot of money. And so, if one of the smaller counties or cities dropped out of it, you know, they would give you that fee back up. But I think more importantly is trying to get some continued ongoing support from the state of Idaho to move forward, too. So, it looks like a good process. Just curious. Counselor Spicklemeyer. I guess, motion to approve resolution 2025-24.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve resolution 2025-24. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Next up, we have active agenda, item D, resolution 2025-25, considering approving a cooperative agreement for mutual assistance between the city of Lewiston and state forester, Idaho Department of Land, state of Idaho, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item, and we have our fire chief with us here tonight. If you have questions for him, otherwise, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Klein.
I do have a question. I was wondering if the fire department meets the training certifications and equipment standards for the wildland firefighting?
Chief, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Thank you, council. Great, my fire chief. I'm sorry, one more time, question?
I was wondering if the fire department met the training certifications and equipment standards for the wildland firefighting?
That's a good question. Thank you. Yes, currently, our firefighters, it depends on which standard. The NWCG is the national standard for that. Our firefighters are all certified as firefighter two, sorry, firefighter one. That's the lowest. They go backwards for structural. So, goes firefighter one, then firefighter two, type one, or type five IC. And so, our firefighters meet that entry-level standard in EMT paramedics and firefighter, or EMT paramedic, EMT basic fireline certifications. So, for, what that means for, if we were to deploy with IDL, is that we can really, right now, only send ambulances. We don't have crew bosses or engine bosses certified at this time.
Counselor Wright.
So, I've got a, I guess, first, first of all, what, what area is this? Where's this area that the firefighters would potentially go to if there was a fire?
So, the agreement with IDL covers the entire state of Idaho that are protected by Idaho Forest taxation. So, an example would be CTP TA is not a IDL lands. So, that area outside of Orfino by Dorsak wouldn't be an area that we would be requested to go help with. And per the council's direction, remember, looking at that next county kind of border, I said two county in my presentation. I wasn't intending Spokane. It kind of missed that it goes Whitman and Spokane. But just that, you know, so Whitman, Assotin, Garfield, Clearwater, La Ta, Nez Perce County is really that region that we have an effectiveness to help people.
Gotcha. And I remember when we last discussed this as a group, there was concerns over, from actuarial-type concerns of the risk and the way insurance risk works, if I'm, if I'm putting that right, when it comes to wildfires. Has that been, what's the result of that? Where do we currently stand on that concern?
That, that, the way that the insurance company rates our city and our workers has not changed. When we're fighting a wildland fire in Bodie Park, or if we're fighting a wildland fire up on Lewiston Hill, or out in Tammany, the same rating applies, and that is that if one of the firefighters is hurt, their, the stop-loss or the out-of-pocket, if you will, is twice what it is if they're fighting a house fire or a car fire, or carrying a patient down a set of stairs.
Gotcha. Well, and they're further away from our hospital.
Further away from what?
Our hospital, in theory, if something happens to them.
Well, that's only, I mean, again, if it's in town, they could be literally blocks away from St. Joe's, fighting, fighting that same fire.
I see what you mean, because of the, the small areas where they consider it a wildland.
It's what they consider as burning. That's how the insurance, if it's, if it's vegetation, brush, grass, timber, then they consider that a wildfire-type fire. So, it's really, it's kind of an interesting thing. I came from a construction industry in my young, like, my late teens and early twenties, and, you know, a roofer had to pay more insurance than a cabinet installer. The risk was different. With the wildfire thing, it's kind of interesting, because they, they group smoke jumpers and hell-attack firefighters with a city firefighter that's putting out a grass fire. Risks are quite different.
Oh, I can, did somebody else have something?
No, I was just saying under my breath that they, it sounds like, but they rate it the same. You're talking about the risk.
Counselor Forsman.
They rate it the same.
I need you to turn on your microphone.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I was, he was saying that they, the risks are quite different in severity, but yet the insurance companies look at it the same way as the risk being the same, even though they're, they're not. But that's, that's kind of a unfortunate guess, is really.
I think, you know, that Mr. Mayor and I had a conversation. He was able to attend some, I think it was AIC that had the insurance presentation, and we've seen kind of the same one. The insurance companies are a little bit on their heels right now in the western United States with the wildfire program. You can look in the hurricane areas, the hailstorms in Oklahoma, things like that. They've got decades and decades of experience with their loss, so they know what to charge. The wildfire, the changes in our, the wildfire profiles in the last decade in the West have the insurance companies on their heels a little bit. They just don't know what to do. And I think we're seeing some insurance companies totally cancel all policies in a state. And I think that's probably where this, this kind of ties to, is they just don't know. So, they're being really careful.
Counselor Spicklemeyer. Mayor, so chief, with, if we're signing this resolution, I'm wondering, like, the fires, the Tammany fire in the north of Lewiston, was a Hatway Road, would we have seen a different response?
Tammany fire was in unincorporated Nez Perce County. So, it was the incident responsibilities with the sheriff of Nez Perce County for that, and we were not requested to assist. We had engines ready on the edges of the city, should the fire have come up the hill and threaten those homes there off Richardson. So, it wouldn't have changed that. The Hatway Fire was a area of impact fire, fast-moving, wind-driven, lots of people trapped, and lots of calls coming into 911 of people needing help evacuating. That fire, I think, had a fortunate response in that there were no other fires going on in the valley. And so, fire departments that have no help agreements at all just came and helped and gave of their efforts and time. We saw quite a large response, and we saved a lot of houses because of that. IDL, where that would have changed since IDL came in and took that over, is that if they would have wanted to, they could have requested resources to stay in and on for that night. But as soon as we could hand it over to them, we handed it over to them.
So, they would have orchestrated the people that responded?
IDL, so IDL requests, sorry, I'm going to get into the weeds just a little bit. IDL would request wildland resources, so our two wildland engines, to help with wildland firefighting. Structural protection is outside of IDL's charter. And so, structural protection is requested through the county emergency management, utilizing the state chief's wild, our resource response plan. And while fast-moving fires like that show that that's where the weakness of that system is, is it outpaced the ability to even get people on the phone to activate those systems. So, we were, we were four or five hours into it before we finally could get the pieces of the puzzle figured out, at which time we also kind of knew the fire got away from the houses, and we knew where it was going to go.
Okay, thank you. If I'm going to ask you a question about the agenda item history sheet, because you know this is important to me, but you have a statement in there, "This agreement does not obligate the city to provide resources or funding beyond our capabilities." Would you explain that, please?
So, the way that those agreements work is, this really is a, it's a, it's the state's language for mutual aid agreement. And so, there's a, there's a clause in there that says, "We make a decision when we're requested, whether or not we can go." And that's, we always maintain that autonomy to say. we, we always maintain that autonomy to say, "We don't have the resources, we don't have the people, maybe our staffing's down, or, or we feel our own risk factor." Say it was on the Fourth of July, and there's a big fire going in Orifino. They, you know what? We have such a huge risk here, we, we can't spare resources to go there. So we maintain that autonomy.
Okay, so, but it also, you also mentioned here, "Funding beyond our capability." So what does that mean?
That's language straight from the contract, so that if, if an organization says we can't send, maybe an organization had units available, but they, they weren't able to send units because they can't afford to pay the units. The requests, so it's, when the request comes in, they can come in as a request for in-kind contribution, where they just, you, you give us 12 hours of your response time for free on a reciprocal agreement that we would give you 12 hours. But sometimes, we, we have that ability to say, "We, we aren't going to come unless you pay." We have to be paid upfront, or not paid upfront, but we have to be, it has to be agreed upfront that we're going to be reimbursed for our, what we contribute.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah. So I've kind of got a two-parter here. So, let's say there's, there's a fire that we get called to that's out of town, and you've got your, your firefighters that are on call or working at that time, a couple of them are on overtime. What goes into the thought process on that? And, and maybe, maybe it's less of that question, depending on how reimbursement works. Do they get reimbursed at overtime, or like, how those, how those things work? Or if they don't, then how's the decision process work?
So for this agreement, the, the, specifically the IDL, if IDL requests us, they're gonna pay us whatever our true costs are, plus our backfill, plus administrative costs to, to process the paperwork.
Gotcha. And then, then part two of that, a similar scenario, but let's say it's that vacation time and things of that nature, you've got, you've got guys on vacation, and addressing this fire would mean pulling in more resources in some way that could impact that vacation time. What, what's the thought process then? Do we risk burnout, or like, how, how does that weigh into the decision?
Yeah, so, if we, if we were gonna be sending resources for a request out, outside of our area, that's not a border, you know, things burning right in our area of impact, but we're sending them for a request Lapway, an IDL area outside of our, our immediate borders, then when that request comes in, it's not an immediate fill. We have 30 minutes to two hours usually to begin that fill process. So we would call back, and if we can't get people back, then we wouldn't fill the order.
Gotcha. But i- in the decision process, would you pull someone off vacation time? Like, would it even be a, and I just mean, like, even the question of calling someone on vacation and saying, "There's a fire, do you want to come off vacation for this?"
Yeah.
Would that take place?
When, when we put a notice out, it doesn't, the notice doesn't selectively, it, it can't tie in with the payroll system and go, "Oh, don't notify people that are on vacation." So it notifies all of our firefighters. They have to make a decision on whether or not they're able, ready to, to, to come back in and engage, come off vacation if they wanted to. But it's not something where we would, don't phone call each person. It's a technology piece that blasts it out to everybody.
Gotcha. And, and, and sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Yeah, I mean, if, I, I guess, and that's fine, how the technology works, but if you didn't have enough people unless a couple guys came off vacation time, would your decision be, "No, I want you to get your vacation time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna address this fire," or is it allowing them to come off vacation time?
No. We allow our members to cancel their vacations. I mean, they could, they, they can, if they had vacation tomorrow, they could wake up in the morning and go, "You know what? It started raining, our, our trip has fallen through," and they can cancel the vacation. So, we'd leave it up to them. If they want to cancel vacation to come back for a structure fire, or for a, a wildland fire, or just to take a regular shift, they, they're allowed to cancel their vacation.
Thank you.
Counselor Klein.
I feel that we have a responsibility to the Lewiston taxpayers that are, that are paying for our fire department, and I would hate to see us spending our, our crews and everything that, that they're paying for away. I, I understand, like, you know, our, our borders or whatever, and not, not letting fire come in, but the fact that, you know, we've, we've heard in the past that the firefighters were overworked, and they were tired, and, and everything, it seems not very responsible to be, mount to wildland fires.
I just.
Counselor Wright.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd, I'd sort of second that, that same comment. And the reason, and, and I could be wrong here, but I don't think I am, I would think pretty much every one of those firefighters would come off vacation to go fight a fire that needs fought, because that's the kind of people they are. And I would worry that they're not getting time to rest if that's occurring, because they, and, and I could be wrong, but I, I think they would not use their, they'd come back from their vacation, because that's just what they, they do. That's the kind of people they are. So there, there's some concern there.
I think, I think when there's a, when there's a threat of wildfire, and that, I've lived on the west coast my whole life, when there's a threat of wildfire in your landscape, firefighters answer the call. It's not an everyday occurrence. We don't have a major wildfire every single day of the week, or even every week of the month. You know, we, we had a very active weekend last weekend, that was incredibly unusual to have. But if you look at the big fires, the historic fires up and down the valley, there're one a year, maybe one every other year, that we have these big fires. So I, I don't think it's, it's a, a big workload issue. That's what they sign up for. The, the, the being too many calls and, and, and that kind of thing, one or two big fires a year, that's not what is overworking the firefighters. It's the, the day-to-day call volume that has increased that provides that level of work.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
My concern, on the opposite of what Counselor Wright and Counselor Klein are saying, is that when there has been catastrophic fires, or fires that might have a risk of coming into our town, other firefighters from other cities have stepped up to help alleviate stress on our firefighters, give some extra hands so they can take a break from a fire that they've been combating for weeks on end and trying to get a handle on. And I think if we're not willing to step up and help them, then what right do we have to ask for help? So I think it's looking beyond us and worrying about those around us to make sure when we have a massive fire that they'll be willing to, to take the call because we did it for them.
Council President Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're kind of getting away from the subject at hand, and this is talking about a mutual assistance agreement between the City of Lewiston and the State Forester, Idaho Department of Land. So that's what we should be discussing, and that's what she, we should be voting on.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
I understand this. If we decided to say no to this, then we're saying we're not, we're not willing to help those other entities, right? Or the...
No, that's correct. If, if we decide to, to not, this is what you had directed me at the work session to, to bring forward. This is one of the, this is the Idaho, and there's a Washington version coming. If, if your direction now is to not engage in this and to not be a partner in our region, then that, that's exactly what you're saying. You're, you're limiting our ability to go out of our boundaries legally, where we can go, and our ability to be reimbursed when we do that.
I think what we're discussing and the concerns are valid to this contract.
And if I may, I think that the concerns you're raising and the things, these are operational decision points that we have, or what we call action points or trigger points, about when we engage and, and what the situation's. And each time we, we do that, those resources are, that's evaluated at the time, and, and decisions made about that specific thing. These contracts allow the underpinning to make these things possible. And, and what I've seen happen in years, in, in my career, is if we don't have these in place, we still end up going to the fires because the fire's happening, and then we end up trying to backdate contracts and go through the process so we can get reimbursement. And that's certainly what happened with Glenn Fire last year, is we didn't have these things in place. And so when it came down to it, we had to do a lot of backend work to, to get the, the bills submitted and invoiced and finally get paid for that fire. So this isn't, it's one of those underpinning contracts to get in place so that then we have the opportunity to make operational decisions.
Counselor Schroeder.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-25.
Second. Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Council President Kleberg to approve Resolution 2025-25. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Nay.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Nay.
Hey, counselors, mayor's not gonna vote on this one, this is your decision, so. Motion dies. Hey, council, next we have active agenda item E, school resource officer agreement, considering approving the school resource officer agreement between Lewiston Independent School District Number One and the City of Lewiston, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Our police chief, Jason Cusick, is with us here tonight. If you have questions for him, or I would entertain a motion. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
So, Mayor, on the list, and I don't know if, Chief, you can answer it, but the budget impact didn't show the cost of the officers to the city?
Chief, please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Jason Cusick, please, chief of police. I'm sorry, sir, what was your question again?
On the list we had here has the budget impacts, and there was nothing in the space, but these officers cost the city money, correct?
The school district reimburses us for their costs. They're, where the potential was, where we have to pick up a little bit of the slack, is if we have, say, a planned vacation, take a whole week off. The part of the contract is that we'll kind of, we'll pay the salary for like, that period, because it shouldn't impact the school district if we have to take the school resource or officer out if we cannot find a replacement. So we just have to leave the school vacant for like, a planned, say, like, vacation, and we may have to fill in, you know, technically pay, they, they won't pay that reimbursement. But we haven't really run into that, you know, you know, they're very cooperative, and, you know, we try to work things out, plan it out, and backfill it. So, that's why the, it's kind of hard to really project what potential fiscal impact it is. It is, it's very minimal.
Thank you. Counselor Spicklemeyer. Motion to approve the school resource officer agreement between the City of Lewiston and Lewiston Independent School District Number One, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. It's been moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, seconded by Counselor Wright, to approve the school resource officer agreement between the City of Lewiston and Lewiston Independent School District Number One, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Clerk Rocky, next we move to active agenda item F, ordinances. Number one, first reading, item A, ordinance 4945, considering amending Lewiston City Code Sections 31 through 108, 1A, and 31-116, 1A, relating to the mailing of the public hearing notices. This is an action item. Counselors, do you have questions? Council President Kleberg.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 4945.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4945. Is there discussion or amendments? Here are none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Clerk Rocky.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4945, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code Sections 31-108, 1A, and 31-116, 1A, relating to the service of the public hearing notice and providing an effective date.
Clerk Rocky, counselors, next we move to item two, second and third readings. Item A, 49, ordinance 4942, considering amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-3, relating to the definition of parking lot, amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-153 relating to landscaping. This is an action item. Our city planner, Joel Plaskon, is with us here tonight, or I would entertain a motion. Counselor Wright.
Yeah. I was looking up some.
We need a motion, counselor, before we can discuss.
Oh, apologize.
Council President Kleberg.
I'll make the motion. Motion to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days, and to combine the second and third readings.
Second.
Vote by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine second and third readings. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, it requires four votes. Council President Kleberg.
I'm good. I made the motion. We got a voice vote coming up. We just had it.
Right after this.
That was to suspend the third, combine the second and third readings. Now we needed a motion to, to read it in full and then debate it.
Wait. I'll make a motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4942, and approve the reading of ordinance 4942 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4942, and approve the reading of ordinance number 49 by 42 by title only. Is there discussion or amendments? Counselor Wright.
Yes, thank you. I had a question on the alternatives that I was looking at, permeable pavement and gravel or mulch beds. I wondered if the permeable pavement, if that can be used in, in similar ways, or the mulch beds in similar ways for the, the outline of the property, the parking lot. For stormwater purposes, just to clarify.
Good evening, Joel Plaskon, city planner. Can you tell me what section you're reading from?
So I was looking at, back up here. So this is under section two, under B, then under two. And in the first sentence, it's saying, "All parking lots under 10,000 square feet of vehicular surface area shall have a minimum of three-foot wide perimeter landscape strip around the portion of the parking lot, not adjacent to a pub, public right-of-way." So I was curious with the, if the purpose, if we look at the purpose for stormwater, does permeable pavement, gravel, or mulch beds work in a similar way?
For stormwater runoff?
Yeah, for stormwater.
Work in the same way as what?
A landscape strip around the portion of the parking lot, parking lot.
I'm gonna guess somewhat, but not exactly, no. Different densities.
Gotcha.
Not gonna get as much absorption, those other surface types, as you will through grass landscape strip, for example?
Okay, thank you. Yep, one other question.
Counselor Wright.
Yep. The... The, in Section... But so Section Two and under B and five, the interior landscaping is to, to be a percentage of total vehicular surface area and in addition to perimeter and right-of-way landscaping requirements. The percentage of interior landscaping, depending on the square feet, ranges from 3% to 10%. Can you explain just some of the, the reasoning for that so I can better understand?
Okay. I will try to do that. That portion of this code is not proposed for any change. That makes any difference to you?
Right, yeah. I, I see what you mean, okay.
Yeah, the idea behind it is the perimeter landscaping and combined with the interior parking lot landscaping helps to get toward the goal of achieving a 50% shade coverage of the asphalt. If you only have it on the perimeter, you're not going to get the, the aisle, drive aisles in the middle of the parking lot or ones that are not adjacent to the right-of-way. So the interior landscaping is also required.
Gotcha. So this goes into maybe the math around what's the coverage of a tree as far as shade? Okay. Thank you.
Counselors, is there further discussion?
I have a amendment if there's no more discussion.
Counselor Wright.
Yes. So I would propose, find this section here.
You're going to have to speak up, counsel, so we can all hear.
All right. So down in exemptions at the, toward the very bottom of this document, in number three, parking areas of less than five continuous parking spaces, would amend five to 20.
Oh, wait, a second. Doesn't need a second yet.
Counselor Wright, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, just to speak to it briefly, that, that's what I'm limited to at the moment because there's still more research that I think I need to do around what alternatives there could be specifically to my questions on that landscape strip. But at least this adjustment will limit the impact to maybe duplexes that have multiple parking spots for their tenants, triplexes, things of that nature, and small businesses that really don't have any customers, but they have a parking lot with five or more parking spaces. So that's just to reduce the impact of this ordinance at this time.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hey, I will repeat the motion to you. Counselor Wright moved, and it was seconded by Counselor Forstman, to change the, in item, let's get the right thing. It's under Section Two, sub...
Exemptions.
Section F, exemptions, number three. It currently reads parking areas of less than five contiguous parking spaces. This is new language that is being added and Counselor Wright has made a motion to change that to parking areas of less than 20 contiguous parking spaces. Do you understand the motion, councilors? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Clerk Rocky, please call the roll.
Nay. Yes.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion dies. Any further amendments? Hearing none. We had a motion by Council President Kleberg, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4942 and approve the reading of Ordinance Number 4942 by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Clerk Rocky, would you call the roll again, please?
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Hey, motion dies. Vote. Are there further motions before we move on? Okay, if not, council will move to item three, Adoption and Approval of Ordinance Sumories. That's not going to happen because we did not approve it up above. We're going to jump down to Roman numeral eight, Unfinished and New Business. Item A, City Councilor Comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the City Council or an item that may come before the City Council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
Just going to say again, Hobby Lobby's out there. Tell your friends to go shopping, please. It's a nice store and there's lots to see and find yourself a hobby and get in there. Public Works Day again was amazing and highest turnout they've had and hopefully it will continue to exceed. They had a new area in there. We're going to put pins on the map from areas that the kids came from and that was, was GIS, is that right? Very cool area to see where all the kids are coming from and so that was a, a cool ad. And they also added a Vista truck there and they got to play around with those lines and how they disconnect the fuses and everything. So that was another ad and I definitely think that brought some people in, so. Good job to all those that volunteered and, and all the companies that partake, partaked in that and educating our future youth.
Thank you, council. Are there further council comments? Counselor President Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, on, I guess, good news. I'd like to congratulate my wife successfully putting up with me for 40 years as of yesterday. Kind of a milestone event. And she's been a real sport about it the whole time. I've done some pretty crazy whitewater wrapping stuff while she was down there babysitting our kids and watching and just freaking out, but she made it through it and had a nice dinner last night. It was all good. Little more somber note this weekend. The state of Idaho, I want to say, lost some institutional knowledge. My father-in-law passed away, Bill Monixson. He was the head of the Idaho Geological Survey for some time up at the University of Idaho, research geologist, volcanologist, one of the foremost authorities on the geology of Hell's Canyon, the Ohi Plateau and the Snake River Plain. He was a good man. Died in his sleep, went down, Sue's sister took him down to Filer, Idaho to have a high school reunion with a bunch of his old buddies. And there's still a few of them running around. He's 87 years old and passed away in his sleep Friday night, so will be remembered in some.
Thank you, council. Congratulations on your 40th anniversary and, uh, mayor, sorry for your loss. Thank you. Other council comments? Hey, city boards and commissions, liaison updates. Are there any updates tonight?
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
Public Works has their assignment due here soon. We'll be having that. And I was going to get an email from, I think Katie Hollings did, but I didn't. But they're basically talking about removing some grants, or I'm sorry, removing historic preservation zoning codes, alignments. So that could be, that could affect future historical areas and respecting of those. I'll find that email for the next meeting and give more detail, but that's a gist of it. All I have for city boards.
Thank you, council. Or commission updates, okay. Mayor comments. Anya, I think we need to get the Public Works Advisory Committee on our next meeting so that we can get that filled. I think Counselor Wright has agreed to do that.
Yes.
Make that nomination at the next meeting. Can we get it on the agenda?
Yes.
To do that, thank you, so we can... Agenda topics. Okay, we'll move to Roman numeral nine, Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
And moved by Council President Kleberg, second by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.